Thank you very much. We request all of us to rise for a national anthem.
Si, abongakulu, ntela kutso sonesi sugumbemane, stokonakula, liti lulesebe.
Osi sileleli Africa, marupa lalisu ponorayo, niswaini tana soye chul. Osi silelela China, nusaporayo. Murena buluka si Xabasa Yesu, utelisele tchale ma srege.
Ose boluke.
Ose boluke si Xabasa Yesu. Si Xabasa South Africa, South Africa. Edi doka monsengira, edidibde fano sini. Purunziro hehehe benges, bani klasa akurfi. Sounds the call to come together and united as time for freedom. It's a Africa, I'm here.
Ngiaabonga.
Thank you very much. We are here as the portfolio committee of OMAFES.
Ngiaabonga kulu silapa, sili komidi, lele bugale tinzaba, hate liti gola tasekaya.
On my left is Honorable Mulekuwa.
Ngala pesanle, nsamsesnwele, gune mshonishwa Mulekuwa.
On close to me is Honorable Desmond Muela.
Eh, tutina, mignemshonishwa Desmond Muela.
On my right, close is veteran, Lekota.
Eh, ngala esegula sami, guneska kailisi, ngomshonishwa Lekota.
And on extreme right is Honorable Fanner Merwe, our coacher.
Ngale, guesegula futsi, gukona Honorable Fanner Merwe.
And if you can see, we have members of the staff of parliament.
Uma wabuka khallesne, malu nga li palamende.
Who are assisting this process to take notes on your submission that you're going to do.
Le, gasita ngiku, thatha, manote, gulo go, lenta beni paramisa.
We want also to thank you for allowing us to delay because of the logistics, as you observe.
Si, funafutsinegunbo nga, kutsinisbegate, le, le, gulo kuputa lisebe na, gwenje ngobe nibonile.
Our time is scheduled from 10 o'clock to half past 12 or 1 o'clock.
Si, katse se tu, silelekeksua, insimbi elshumi, guyagui, leli, se ikabanga, insimbi elshumi, nabili, gumbi, insimbi ekala.
We are here to allow yourself to make inputs on the amendment bill that is before the portfolio committee.
Silapakto, nige tala tu ba, le kutsinikone, na, ni gwendati paramisa, glomse tu si vivinya, eh, lo, tribi eloago, igule portfolio committee.
You'll recall that the Constitutional Court declared that Electoral Act 73 of 1998 is unconstitutional.
Nita okumbula kutsi, ingandolo, etemse, nama, etemse tu si segelo, eh, paramisa, eh, kutsi leskaba, lesbalo ago, salomse tu, asi hambisanle, mseto si segelo.
That it does not allow independent candidates or individuals to participate on the provincial and national elections.
Ngobe, ai vumeli kutsi, emalu nga lafuta nginlalketwa atimele, nome angenelela, etifunzini, awakonu kutsi anangena, eh, ngalomse tu, ngalintela, ugnakone.
So parliament has been directed to change that anomaly.
So ngalo wa, i palamende, ini getwe, eh, scatse kutsi, ikone gulungisa logo.
What happened is that immediately the directive, the Minister for OMAFES appointed a task team.
Eh, logo ndegile kutsi, lese lulego, sese naskisha, obese gumi swaltsimba liltite, lita ugbana nalomsebe ndi.
Which extensively consulted with the stakeholders on the proposed amendment.
Le, gulisimba lilebeseliya, kona kutsi, likone gungotuli sana, nobel pume, libonisana, nabobongela, bat sinsegago, glomse tu.
A report was tabled before executive.
Gubesekisha umbigo, abewa pambi, guebuholi.
And cabinet tabled the bill on the 10th of January 2022.
Wa besekutse kabinet ya, bese ibega lomse tu si vivinya, eh, ngamshaga 10, eh, gu, Januar, nama pimbitvane, glomnyaga luse du.
Which was referred to us, the portfolio committee of OMAFES.
Gungago, bese unjulselwa ki, sisi komidi, le bugale tinzaba, hate liti gola tasekaya.
We then issued, we then invited the minister for interaction.
Si, besesinesemema, umpatsi, swagutza buyes, tabonisana, stoto sana.
We issued the invitation for returns, for inviting members of the community or South Africans to write, to do return submission to the portfolio committee.
Si, besesenda, sesesememo, se kutsi, aluga mpakatsina, awakonu, lo kutsi, abeni livi, lilebeseliya, buywa ngala, eh, liletwa ngala ki, sisi komidi, lilebugale lomsebe ndi.
And the closing date was on the 1st of February 2022.
Liila ngalekvalo, abegunglo, mshaga 21, nglenya ngayenlo, vanelomnyaga luse du.
We then also received requests for oral submissions.
Si, besefutsi, sitwala titrelo, tekutsi labanya, banatsanza, gwendati ethulu, bat ikulumeli.
Which was conducted on the, on the 2nd and the 3rd of.
Logu infolen ndegi, ngamshala lulu, nyana mshati timbili, eh, gule nyanga ya February.
After that, the portfolio committee took a public hearings.
Emva logo, le komit, le bugale lomsebe ndi, pete satsasno, mosekutsi, ipume ngap.
Then started our public hearings ilimpopo in Kwasunata.
Si, beseshtala, gu, thwala luvo, le mpakatsi, le, ilimpopo na Kwasunata.
We started ilimpopo on Monday.
Si, besesilimpopo ngembulo.
We concluded yesterday.
Si, beseshtala itolu.
We're starting in Pumalanga in Bombela today.
Si, akhtala namshala pa in Pumalanga, in Bombela.
We'll go to Emelo tomorrow.
Ksa sasta obanga, eh, Emelo.
And Mittelbeck after that.
Emva logo, si banse, eh, Mittelbeck.
So the portfolio committee here, they don't have any decision on the options on amendment bill.
Le komit, le nibona mbigwenu, aina, totino, moleti tawe, ndaglomse tu, lo, tribi eloago.
We're here to listen to your views.
Silapagutova, imibono yenu.
And once all the public hearings have been concluded.
Uma se gwendiwé, gonge, luglalela, lugwendiwa esive, se kupetiwe.
The committee will sit and deliberate on the issues that you have submitted.
Le komit, ta obese, ishala pasi, se ya, bonisana, guletinzaba, lento be, nti paramisile.
In summary, the amendment bill proposed two options.
Eh, kafushane, je, lomse tu si vivi, electoral system that is, eh, we're currently using is intact. Oh, paramisa kutsi, lellela, eh, teluketwa, lisebe ndisago, gugnyalo, ibuge etwe.
We have to create a method or modalities to include independent candidates.
Gufane le sakeli trina, nomeliso, le kutsi fake kasi, emalu nga langena, lalketwa atimele.
The second option is that you must go to, must conduct election on.
Lo. You can repeat that please.
The amendment bill, in summary, it proposed two options. The amendment bill that you are dealing with, it proposed two options.
Lomse tu, lo, tribi eloago, leskulmanga, olala, oparamisa tinwoletimbe, lega ketwa guto.
The first one is that you must maintain the current electoral system.
Utzi, lo, akhtala, singa yegela, ngjongo beginjalu, lintela, lesechendu, swagomange, guletelketwa.
And include or have modalities to include independent candidates.
Nomasi ketsi, gubane tindela, liti, sete, liti sitetekfaka ekasi, emalu nga langena, lalketwa atimele.
The second one, constituency based electoral process.
Yesbe, le kutsi, gumele sibe, lintela, yeluketwa, lita osechendu swale, emaovisla, eh, etinhlangan.
Those recommendations.
Le, titi paramiso.
They don't represent the position of the portfolio committee.
Adisha kutsi, nglololofuna, ngle komit, le lapa.
We're bringing them here for you, give, to look on other methods on how can enhance this legislation.
Si, nesitela, pakto, vagi, ni kutsi, ngti plati, nyetindela, etingange, ta kutsi, gulungisa, lulcel.
As I said, at the end of the public hearing.
Njengo be yengacho, uma se kpele, luglalela sive, nisgwendago.
The committee would deliberate and take a decision, a report to be submitted to the National Assembly.
Le komit, le, lapa manja, ita obese, i, satsa gonge, lulokshiwa, se ya, kona, ne kutsi, palo, umbigo, lita unjulisa, gubanza kulu.
So when we are political parties, individuals who are here, when they make submission, they must be respected.
Uma ngabe, ema trembo, etembusa, ve, nama, labatimele, ba paramisa loksi, te, mele, ba shonishwe.
We're going to allocate you five minutes to make your own submission.
Stagu, nige tala scatse, swendetaka, koti paramiso.
How we're going to do it is that if you see, yes.
Ointela, lestaku, ndango, uma ubuga, la, gune lusuluwe, tishalo.
We have a team of our staff who are going to assist you.
Si, neti, 78, letikona, la, lita ukona kutsi.
We're going to identify 10 hands as the first group.
Stau, besesikomba, tanda, letilshumi, njengelikimbulikala, lestau kulum.
Then you come and make your own submission to the portfolio committee.
Ota obese, geni, akona, kutsiniti, lapa pambil, nende tetu loti, no gule komit.
So we're going to listen, take notes with the team and members here.
Stau, besesiyakona, gune lalela, bese bayapala, palala, labashila, pana, nimalu.
No one must be excluded from this process.
Agae, kolekmele, valelu, ngapandle, glolcel.
I want to repeat, no one is going to be excluded from this process.
Agae, kolo tavo, valelu, ngapandle, glolcel, ngiapinza, futsi.
If you recall, there was a social media.
Uma ngabe, tavo kumbula, khalbe, gune, lukfagiwe, engulde, nitektuman.
That the portfolio committee has excluded people in Toyoanjo.
Eh, kutso akonale, komit, livalale, ngapandle, labanya, labatite.
And I want to repeat it to be on record.
Ngifuna kukpinza, logo, kutsi kukone, kukaluwa.
That we've not, we've never excluded people from the hall.
Kutsi azangesi, valale, bandu, ngapandle, ema olin.
So we have methods on how we're dealing with the proceedings.
Si, netindela, tete, kutsi, si, bampancha, lile ngubo.
They observe our process throughout.
So, lile komit, njengo be, lakona, lita ugbaka, kanji, swali ngubo, etwe, gute, ifige, eklinen.
At the end of this process.
Sorry?
At the end of this process.
Eklinen, walolcelo.
Those that are spreading negative or lies to this process.
Labo, labasaba, laisa, ema, ngalolcelo.
Will properly respond to them.
Stau, akonakutse spenfula, ne, gnaabongenzela, ya kona.
By this stage, we want to give our people to make submission to the committee.
Si, nesfisa, ucesnike, debanvul tu ba, le kutsi, bende tetu lotabo, gule komit.
I'm now going to recognize hands, the 10 hands that must queue on the line.
Manje, ngta osasala, liltuba, ngikone, gubona, nama, ngitiltuba, guletanda, letilshumi, deklala, letingi, toltawa, ndati paramiso.
You raise your hand. Once you're done, we go to another pitch.
Oparamisa sasala, sa, ko, uma so konjiwe, utanga pambil, ukonexala, la, nibelshumi, uma senkretzi, nda obese, nbiela, imove.
I'm now recognizing hands.
Senkala, lile manje, ngikomba, tanda.
Number. So when, you can use any language for submission, don't have a challenge.
Uma ngabe, wenda sethu lo, ngasemenisa.
We have a team here that are going to assist us to interpret your submissions.
Si, neli, trembo le, aboto li, kililasita lana, oma ngabe, usemenisa, lulewako, wenda sethu lo, sa.
Are these the only name hands that we?
Itokpe, lati, titanda, lisi ti, bonile na, ngobesi, zingale, tilshumi.
Okay.
Gulungile again.
No, we're not forcing people, we are here, yeah, the third one.
Nasia, lisiesa, astunze, telemondu.
We're encouraging you to make submission because you are here.
Si, nikutatha, kutsinende tetu lo, ngobe, nikona, nila.
Yeah, the fourth one, then we'll come to the second round.
Stau, beseshtwala, omchige, leta wesbe.
Number four.
Okona wesine.
Okay, we'll come to second round, let's start with the, once you, when you finish, just put your submission there, on the, what you must do, you must say, I'm Desmond Muela.
Ino, letfane lenye, nde kutzu, umunfu, ate tu, le, njengesbonel, kutsi, ngingu, Desmond Muela.
So that you are assisting us for the team to record who made submission and so forth and so on.
Ngobe, ngewenda njalo, tavo, konaksitala, litsimba, le, etwe, lukonu, lukupalaka, kutsi, ngban, lo, wendesparamiso, watsin.
Thank you, you can start.
Ngiaabong.
Uh, thank you very much. I am Clement Malengwa Simsongo, uh, from, uh, Lanzene region, Nzigazi subregion. Uh, we thank you very much for this opportunity that you've given us as members of the community and as people who were participating, participating in the elections. Um, one, uh, I was participating in the elections as an independent candidate. And, uh, to be honest, uh, when I saw, uh, was to be restructured, one, this bill speaks to the realities, the realities of our communities, the realities of what is happening within our words, within the processes of, of, of elections. One, we need to understand that, uh, independent candidates, they don't just pop up from nowhere. Uh, independent candidates are in, 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 as a symbol of certain processes that did not go well, uh, as a symbol of some discrepancies that take place when, uh, the processes of electing councillors and the process of electing, uh, PR councillors take place. So this bill says to the voter, to the normal person, who, lo, lala, nama, ngubu, it says.
Who stays anywhere?
It says, you can choose anyone and anyone that you feel can work for the community. Cause we must remember, uh, we've been having elections for years. By the way, I'm a member of the African National Congress, in good standing, of course. Though I attended, uh, as I said, I was an independent candidate, ulama processes law. If you want to understand, we, we can, uh, I can explain to you outside. But what I'm trying to say is, processes that lead to, uh, branches having to rely on independent candidates are as follows. One, the community will have a certain person, even if he's a member of any organization, but the processes that are being used by our organizations are manipulative, we all know this story. So this bill, what it says, it says, before anyone can be a leader of any organization, it brings us back to the basics, to say, before anyone can be a leader of any organization, that person is a leader of a community. So now, it, what, what that says, it says, nama ngabe, i organization.
Even if an organization.
La, laguyo, nama, la, 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 la.
Where the candidates, uh, belong to.
Yes, it's na, nama ngabe, le, ntsanganoleyo, inaguboni, logo, logubono, anglo man.
Then. Even if the organization does not see what the community or the public sees in the person.
The potential, the capacity, the capabilities, the work ethic of that particular person. If an organization, of the organization that that person belongs to, does not recognize or realize that capacity, then now it gives the opportunity, it gives the community that opportunity to say, but now, yes, we are members of this organization. Yes, uh, we, we see capacity in this man or woman, in this member. But now, since there are processes that are driven by organizations, if they don't favor, nama, if they don't support what we see, cause reality is, why we have councillors? We have councillors because service deliveries must be implemented. And now if members of the community can realize that, yes, this is the person, maybe that our organization, as different as they are, is, is lobbying for and whatnot, but now we are given the opportunity to go to the grounds, isn't it? To express our, 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 our interest in that particular person. But now if still our interests are not met, then we have an option. Cause some of us, we, 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 we can't like wake up one day and say, I'm joining another opposition party and so forth. But being an independent candidate, it gives the opportunity and option to say, but now this is a member of so and so, but this is not recognized in the manner in which we see and, and, and think that he can assist our community in whatever it is that we need as a community. So in a nutshell, I say, I support this bill, one, cause it brings, uh, transparency, it brings honesty, cause when they elect you, the people that, that, when they elect you, that means you serve them. You don't serve any other structure, you serve the people, so that service delivery is implemented. Cause we have to be honest, our country is in a very dire state. Corruption has corrupted us, our minds has corrupted development, has, has demolished everything. So it is us that we need to stand and say, we can't sit back like it's business as usual. We have to stand up, we have to wake up and smell the coffee and make sure that the, the, the sufferings or the challenges that we are facing today, our kids, the next generation, they don't experience. But it can be if we keep on doing it the very same way, cause mine is to say, we cannot apply the same method and expect a different outcome. So if we keep on applying this same method, then now we're saying it is fine. But now if we change the method, then now it says, even our organizations as they are, as stable and strong as they are, they will now start to work hard, those councillors that have been elected, they'll start working hard.
Work towards your, your conclusion.
Yeah, they'll start working hard knowing that we have, and the community has an option to, to elect whoever they feel can work for them, irregardless of whichever party they affiliate. So in a nutshell, I say, I support this bill and it will assist us, it will assist even the ordinary voter, to say, meaning Yamati, Babesigalala, Babesigalala.
It will assist them to say, at least I know Mr. Sigalala, for example.
Yeah, he's been here, he's been assisting families, he's been assisting the community at large. We as the community, we feel that this man or this woman can lead us correctly and can bring service delivery. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for, for your submission. Next.
Good day all. My name is Stacy Lee Engelbrach. I'm a proud owner of a local waste management company in Bombela, a youth activist and a concerned citizen opposed to the bill the government intends to pass because it is unconstitutional. Hello?
Uh, can you assist?
Hello? There we go, you're working.
Okay, process, thank you.
Hello, okay. Because it's unconstitutional and does not allow for the two direct elections of our leaders to parliament. I feel it is important for us to start holding individuals accountable for their actions as opposed to political parties. As a business owner in the waste management sector, I've witnessed countless issues in service delivery and complete lack of accountability. With our current system in place, it becomes difficult for one to hold an individual responsible for any mishaps. We need a constituency based system that gives all individuals equal chance of being able to run and stand as representatives for us, the people. There are countless factors that make this new bill amendment unconstitutional. However, for today, I will, I will be particularly focusing on independent's limited access to 200 seats in parliament. In terms of the electoral amendment bill, independent candidates are not able to contest the 200 national to national seats in the National Assembly. An independent candidate may only contest the regional seats in the National Assembly. Therefore, out of 400 of the seats in assembly, the 200 national to national seats are reserved for political parties only. This is limiting to both independent candidates and citizens' rights to vote. Political parties are able to contest the national to national seats and a political party that, that doesn't obtain sufficient votes to win any regional seat may still obtain a compensatory seat in National Assembly. This is not the same for independent candidates. As previously mentioned, according to the electoral amendment bill, an independent candidate will not be able to win seats in the National Assembly despite receiving sufficient votes to meet the quota of votes per national to national seat. This appears to be a move that allows for political parties to remain as the main occupants in parliament. Through this amendment, independents are not given equal opportunity and voters may feel as if their vote is not being fairly heard. As a whole, South Africa has a very low voter turnout and by placing limitations that clearly place political parties in a more favorable position, further reduces voter participation. The People's Bill allows independent candidates to contest all 400 seats of the National Assembly, both the regional and compensatory seats. All candidates will be, will have equal access and equal opportunity to win a seat. To me, this sounds like a democracy. We should not fear allowing independent candidates into parliament. As a democracy and a nation that stands strongly by the notion of Ubuntu, we should know that working with each other and for each other makes us as a nation stronger. Thank you for the opportunity you've given me to speak. I am because we are.
Thank you. Next.
No, ngiaabonga, slalo.
Thank you, Chair.
Ngibingale, le, le, malu nga, mpakatsi, ntsanganu, tongalete kona.
Greetings to members of the public and all parties represented.
Ngalo ketsegi, le, malu nga, in komit, le, parliament.
And esteemed members of parliament.
Uh, luka malama, nguvuswa, gatuve.
My name is Wusi Dube.
Ngikala, nse Salubinza, eh, Watfai, in Bombela.
I'm a resident of Salubinza, Watfai, in Bombela.
Ngilu nga, lentsanganu, eh, Bafui.
I'm a member of Bafui Party.
It's a farmers association.
It's a farmers association.
Eh, Nazi, kishé, si, atzinzega, guyagui, ngalomse tu, lo, shlongo, tu, kutsi, upasiswa, eh, parliament.
We are also stakeholders in this bill that parliament, um, is amending.
Ngagubuga, wami, ntsanza, ku, supporta, lenganye, kala, le, parani swale, komit.
Uh, my submission is to the first part that is proposed, eh, by the committee.
As opposed to the constituency based representation. Angat, nama. Nsonzelega, kulu, gulespiga, nama, snengi.
Uh, I'm not sure if I'm too close to the speaker or there is a challenge generally.
Your own point, I'm saying you are audible, I don't know why are you disrupting yourself.
Yeah, ngtenena, mangaseva, uzi.
I ended up not here, uh, understanding what was going on.
So, le PR list system.
The PR, eh, list system.
Gulesimo, lesna, so, eh, South Africa.
Uh, in the state that is prevailing in South Africa.
Ngio, lenkavanga, kutsi, ngassebe ndela, ngono.
I think it's the best that we can work for us.
Uma ubuga, ulama keto, lasuka, guo, eh, local government.
If you can relate to the election that we just had in terms of local government.
Guyeguabona gala, kutsi, uma, gungenerela, kaku, uma independent. Askuni, kutsi, si, kone, controller, inzaba, kutsi, bomage, nabu, kufane, le, batasa, elkaza, tu, etikunla, letasa, tinumo, ku, government.
It became, um, evident that when independent candidates are participating, we have no control in terms of managing the gender balance, especially towards women being represented.
Nebandula, basha, abakonu, ksa satalfu, bakale, ngovala, bama independent, babonaga, labakon, bisa, emalala, tite, kukona, persuade, dami, pakatsi.
The same goes with the youth because if you can, eh, notice those who are much older are able to convince the community.
So, ngaleso, sizatu, si, tanzap, segela, kulu, le, party, eh, representation, as god, asukwe, kutima independent, atasen, kaza, now.
It is for that reason that we support the first one, but we are not opposing to. but we are not opposing to say independent candidates can also participate. Uh, it will have its own challenges to say, how is it managed when we have long list of candidates when going for the elections? What I think can pose a challenge for the work of the Electoral Commission? Uh, the reasons that I mentioned. It makes us to oppose the system of going to elections using the constituency system. I believe that the Constitutional Court, uh, was not. I am missing my notes. I think independent candidates must also given a chance or an opportunity like political parties. That can assist in terms of giving equal opportunities. So that both parties, the political parties and the independent candidates can participate equally. Uh, I will end there for now.
Thank you. Next.
Greetings.
And all protocols observed. Um, I'm my tutor, Steflyn Makakula from Komazi, a teacher by profession. And also I'm a, 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 a flourish licensed host. I'm dealing with pregnant women and babies. Uh, I'm a facilitator for trauma and counseling in one of the colleges. And also I'm affiliating in our local organizations and I'm participating in my community. Uh, as a, I'm in a, in one of the community, clinic committee members and also in the CPF Committee, I'm a, I'm one of them. So, as one of, the, the first speaker has said, most of the things that I wanted to say. Wuti, my independent candidates, they don't just come from anywhere, they are from the communities. I'm happy when I look at this Amendment Bill because, Wuti, most of the things are covered.
To say everything or most of the things are covered?
Yes, but I've noted two things there. Uh, Wuti, as I've said, that community I'm participating and the local government elections, there are processes, lapa. And those processes, they're giving us opportunities to, they're giving us opportunities like, um, to, to tell the community what is it that you are busy with if they don't know. But we are deprived, uh, of opportunities now.
Those opportunities?
Uh, it's not about E position, but it's about service delivery. So I'm happy, Wuti, uh, we have been catered as independent candidates. And then what I have seen there. It can be amended is the issue of E, 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 E period from moving from a party to, maybe if a person is from another party when it is voting to a, 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 another party. I think because we have, we, we, we have processes we are given.
In the processes?
Yes, to present ourselves. If a person is in a party, belongs to a certain party and after the presentation, we are realized, Wuti, this person is a right candidate for us to choose. Uh, then I think the time is not good. I, 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 I think it has been, it must be amended. Because if, meaning, like.
Me?
Yeah, I'm busy with women and children, which means men, it's not, it's not easy for them to know about what, the things that I'm busy with, the community. But after the presentation, if maybe we are given a month to present and the community must choose the person or nominate the person that will stand for the community to, for service delivery. If the period doesn't suit them to move from their party, if it is three months, I think the time can be maybe forty-eight hours. So that a person can think and realize and digest the things that a person has said and look back if it is true or. Then, the other thing that I've noted on, I think it's page seventeen, the clause of funding. Also, um, I think, um, independent candidates must be funded like the other parties because, um, it is not, we are, we are not, uh, contesting for business sake, but it's for service delivery. I submit.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next.
Greetings.
Department of Home Affairs.
Before we proceed, I would like to. It cannot be right that as parties, we do not have documents. I am not sure if you have looked at that before.
I'm a document in Kulumanga, my ID book, ID numbers.
Documents, uh, by that, I'm, I'm referring to ID books. Here so far, um, my. Since we are here as the community. I reside in Malikutu, that's where I'm from.
Wat thirty-seven.
Wat thirty-seven. In N'ombela. We have children amongst us whom we still need to vote for us next time. But the Department of Social Development. And the Department of Home Affairs. Are not able to assist them to get their IDs. Because their parents are from neighboring countries. Uh, so that is, uh, actually disadvantaging us because, uh, in future, uh, we not show whom will be affected. Over and above that. The department says those children must be, uh, in schools. And still they are not able to get the assistance they need since they do not have the IDs. So my take is that it is killing us because of that. I submit to you that you should go back and look into that submission I've just made before you come and say we must, um, use or be in political parties when there are issues with identity documents. I would not like to belabor the point because the speakers before me already alluded to the issues of independent candidates. So my point was that the ID issues must be looked into.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, uh, the issues that the gentleman was raising. They are not expressed on the Amendment Bill. But we take note on the issues that is raised. Because we are a team of, uh, members of Parliament who serve in different committees. So what we are encouraging is that. We must at least try to focus on this Amendment Bill. If there are issues that are related to our depart, our portfolio committee, which are not within the Amendment Bill. Immediately we finish. You then come and raise them with us. So for now, let's just focus on the, so that we don't lose track on the issues that we are dealing with today. Yeah, so that is our plea. Any other issue which is not within the Amendment Bill. Then you can come and raise them after. We have members here, they serve in various committees, social, international. So we are, will wait for that space when we've concluded. Uh, if you have any other matter of the ID. In fact, that matter, we know about it, uh, of the matter that we are raising. So can you identify another set of hands? Number one. Number two. Number three. Number four. Yellow, yeah. Number five. Number six. Number six. Number six, seven. Number eight. Uh, number nine, Sisi. Number nine, Ummamala, Pambi.
The lady in front.
And number ten.
And number ten, Wesi, Welishumelo.
Yeah, then we must deal with this and then we'll take another set.
Uh, greetings, everyone.
Yeah, there are others who came late. There are rules that we've, uh, announced, that we are giving you five minutes to make a submission. So when we stop you, we are going to stop you outside your minutes. So you must appreciate that, that point. Thank you.
Alright, uh, greetings. My name is Sandeem Tetwa. Uh, I'm a librarian by profession, a member of the African National Congress. Uh, I have a, a problem with this, uh, amendment. But yes, we support because the Constitutional Court has declared it unconstitutional. But my problem with independents, most of them are angry people. So, one, one will lose at the branch level where we elect, maybe for example councillors. Then tomorrow, that particular individual say, "I'm an independent now." So another thing, we are independent, okay, locally is fine. How are we going to deal with it national and provincial? Who are you reporting to? Should it happen that, um, your maker or your ancestors call you? Who's going to replace that particular individual? Because with parties at least, maybe from, if X decide to leave us in the land of the living, we know that we are going to replace him with Z. So but now with the independent, how are you going to deal with that? How are you going to deal with that with independent? Uh, so lastly, I'm a hundred percent rejecting it when it comes to, uh, national and provincial. But locally, yes, I can agree locally because we can check most of them. How, one, the, one speaker here said, "I'm a member of the African National Congress, but I was an independent." Then, are you, then it raises question, you cannot contest your father. It raises question, I submit.
Next.
Thank you. Uh, greetings to the house. Uh, the name is Nation Temba Mtenjane. I'm a member of the African National Congress and I hail from Ganyamasane, Ward twenty-one. Um, firstly, let us welcome, uh, the discussion in the house today and thanks, uh, the parliamentary committee for getting closer to the people to hear our views on this sensitive, uh, issue. Uh, firstly, let me reject outrightly the decision.
Sorry, they want, they request you to repeat your name for people who have record.
Nation Temba Mtenjane.
Thank you. Can proceed.
As I was saying, that I would like to firstly voice my dissatisfaction with the judgment of the Constitutional Court. We accept that the Constitutional Court is the apex court in the land and that, uh, we are a constitutional democracy. However, we need to also take into consideration as a constitutional infant democracy that, uh, there are many stages that we still need to go through as a democracy for us to reach the ideals of a fully functional democratic state. My problem here is we seem not to be taking into consideration the bread and butter issues on the ground that are affecting our democracy as it stands. Firstly, the expansion of, uh, the, the, the list for candidacy at the provincial and national level to independent candidates, it's only going to serve as an unnecessary ex, uh, uh, expansion of the ballot paper for, uh, uh, these levels. We can see as we stand here, uh, in the previous elections, that our ballot paper has been ridiculously, uh, uh, been long unnecessarily long. You have a party called Kiss today, tomorrow is Sokha, tomorrow is Daka. And all these parties, they stand just to elevate themselves, individuals appearing on, uh, news TV and then diminish and disappear thereafter. So it just saves to that. Another problem that I have is that when you are going to, to open a seat like the presidency of a country for an individual, you are going to submit this country to the deepest pockets, to the individuals who have the largest wealth of the country. Individuals who are rich can simply maneuver all over the country, make their points, promise people all sorts of ideals and thereafter. This is going to be a capitalist country. It's going to be for the individuals who are rich, no matter how good your programs or your intentions at a class level. If you cannot compete with a certain business person, automatically if you can't reach a Hermanskrall and Guamshanga and Wackerstrom, how do you expect that people will be able to recognize, uh, uh, the objectives, no matter how good or ideal that you, you are having? So I think it is becoming, uh, uh, a scheme for, for the rich. And in fact, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm tempted to say, uh, our jurisprudence has been off track just a little bit on this one. Uh, although the, the decisions of the Constitutional Court cannot be challenged, they are the, the ultimate as far as these issues are concerned. But our judges are also human. We must also expect them to err and to learn from their trials and tribulations. Because our constitution as it stands currently, it caters for direct representation. Because our constitution talks about proportional representation. It says if I'm residing at Ward twenty-one, Ganyamasan, in the list of my party, a member from Ward twenty-one or an adjacent ward to whom will be reporting to me and I will be holding it accountable, will be there automatically. So why do you need a person, an individual, who does not have a base? So why do you need a person, an individual, who does not have a base to account to? That person can tomorrow tell us that is going to be residing in Dubai. And what will you do? Run with the motion of no confidence, call by election and so forth. So let us not throw our country into disarray. Actually, this process to me, it seems like a duplicate of what we already have. Our constitution, uh, is intact, that has focused on service delivery and, uh, bringing opportunities to our people. The electoral act is correct as it is, I submit.
Thank you, next.
I'd like to greet the parliament in large. Thank you so much for coming here to reach us and hear what we are going to say today. My name is Michael Dunam Lambo. I'm from Ganyamazane, Ward 19. I'm a member of the ANC. I would like to submit that if you say we should accept the bill, it will be a problem for us, a very huge one. If a candidate must represent people, it's gonna be hard for the person. We as the community members, we feel this is a game that individuals want to, uh, to make, to, to divide us as the nation. We are led by the seats in the parliament, that how many seats are in the parliament? So now if we have thousand members of, uh, in, in the pilot papers, how long will the pilot paper be? Most of the individuals who wants to be individual candidates are the ones that who got hurt in their parties. So if we can nest, uh, individual feelings, we'll have a problem because everyone will, will want to have their own, own parties. Same as the brother who said he's the member of the parliament but also was an individual candidate. Is there such a thing though? Uh, if you say, I, I will submit that if you say this bill is correct, I would just request that all the individuals need to be trained that how, how they should treat us as the community. Their, their equality shame is leading us.
I, I, I don't know if you are interpreting correctly. But I'm saying, I'm trying to say, if you want to be a, 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 a person who will be, uh, standing in, in parliament, your qualifying, your qualifying method should be equal to the parties. Not, not as an, as an individual.
If you need to pop up 20 ren as a member and also the party must also pop up the 20 ren so that you can be the member of the parliament. If the, the qualification of being in the parliament is 600, 600,000 seats, then you also as an individual must put a thousand seats. If this person, if this individual say will represent a person from Lissigisig or in Mozambique, does he know where that place? So what I'm trying to say is that this bill will not be suitable for us. Yes, in the local government will be good, but national and provincial it won't work. So those who, who have been hurt, they should wait. If, let's, 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 let's wait for them to be healed. If it means we wait for two years, let them wait for two years, they'll be healed, they'll be fine. Government who nest feelings for people. Thank you so much.
Thank you, next.
Uh, morning everyone.
Uh, morning.
So I'm an independent candidate with the barber corner so that we can have the changes. So come get to him, I'm a independent, it's because of the dissatisfaction.
Okay, uh, morning everyone. The issue of independent candidate doesn't come anywhere. It just came where people, they were not happy with their leaders, so they decided to be part of the independent candidates. And that person that come up from anywhere, he was chosen, he or she was chosen by the community. So in short, I'm saying we should support them. Let's give them an opportunity as individual candidates. I won't be lovely.
Uh, your name, your name, uh, Mr., I, I heard Jeffrey, Jeffrey who?
My first one is Buso, B U S O, that is face in English.
My name is Jeffrey Buso from Malagut.
Just, just relax, pause a bit.
We want to respect your submission.
We're humbly, they are requesting the names where they are, they are recorded. Desmond Moela. So you'll be fair to us and yourself and the people. What's your name?
Good afternoon everyone. And all our special guests from the parliament. I would also like to thank, uh, for submitting the bill in front of us. We as people, we need to be patient with each other. This doesn't start today. We had two, uh, parties in the parliament, if I'm not lying. And we have given an opportunity and we entered as the ANC and other organizations. And then when we entered the parliament, we know that there was blood that, that has been spitting. So can that not happen today, please? Let us be patient with one another. It also happened in 2008. Uh, with the actions that are happening in a, another party that I will not mention. And there was an organization that was formed in 2008. And they pointed at one another in the community. Because they were scared that will take more seats in the parliament. That organization was cold. And it happened that it, it, it was burning in the community. In 2012. Another organization was formed again. And standing here, we are. Can you please check the way they hire their employees? Because now we are seeing that teachers are given first priority. We know very well where the teachers, uh, are belonging. It happened not so long in the local government elections. They, uh, sorry? Okay, to the agent that we send them to represent us. They've seen something that the IEC employees are doing. But after they, after elections, they came back to report to us. Because of the, uh, financial cost, we couldn't challenge the, those challenges. For the love of the community, we decided to give them an opportunity to let them lead and see what's gonna happen in future. So today standing here, I wanna test, testify that I am the one holding the community not to, to strike, not to close the roads. Because those who are saying they are in the big organization. The organization can have, uh, very good rules and regulations, but their members, they not, uh, control their people. Can you please, when you go back to the parliament, please, uh, submit those issues that we are having here? Especially in safety. And, uh, and the IEC officials, yeah. Thank you, we, I request that a lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Sevong, next.
Greetings everyone and also greet the leaders. I don't agree with the bill that is in front of me. With certain reasons. If you can check, I, as an individual who will represent someone from Witbank, uh, sorry, from national and provincial, I am staying here in Ganyamazane, I have to represent someone from Witbank, that person that I don't even know.
Or be accountable to the community. How are they going to account?
And if you can check, we'll have a problem when those individuals will have to come back and give us feedback. How will they account? As we speak, uh, we have huge problems, for example, an ID issue. We have, um, people who have, uh, South African citizenship, but his, he, his ID has been blocked. Which means we can have a fake president who has a fake ID in South Africa. Because that person wants to be a president and you find that most of the people here, their IDs are blocked and you see that this is a problem. And also we have a problem that these people, if they want to lead us, uh, the regulations are saying. For example. If a certain place. They will say, I will need 50 signatures. Of which is, it is easy to get those, uh, signatures. Because, uh, I have money to buy these people with their signatures because it is easy to buy them. If it happens that this bill is being approved. We need to have a firm law to these people. If he wants to represent people to the parliament. They needs to have a certain number that shows how many people he or she has. Same goes with the money. Greetings everyone. And all protocol observed.
Hmm, our submission, because we are from stakeholders, as a Pinar. We are from Epinar, we are from Pinar in Msoquaba. Our submission is that all the independent candidates who want to contest must fall under certain national structures in line with Schedule 1A and Schedule 1 and Schedule 1A in terms of registration, qualification and so forth. And therefore, we feel that all those independent structures who want to participate on the election processes must also undergo the screening processes in terms of, uh, police clearance or criminal records because we experienced a number of cases whereby people just go for the sake of enriching themselves while they are criminals. Then as a stakeholder, taxi association, CPF's, national school governing bodies and other national structures must indicate or elect a person, a cer- certain person who will represent them, but following all the processes. Thank you.
Thank you, next.
Greetings everyone. My name is Given. My name is Given Moriri. From Ward 37. From Wat 37. I would like to say those. I would like to say those individuals who are independent, they are from the ANC organization, just that they see that there are leaders who are. So if they've seen that they've chosen you to be a counselor or something. They see that you don't do something, they feel. They feel that you need to be an independent individual and they will support you. That's why they, they are fight where they are voting. And I also think, as the brothers and sisters have said already. You need to be voted by many people. Who will vote for you when you are alone. Which means we are from our organization. That's why one will say this is no longer an ANC.
African National Congress.
An African National Congress. That's why they are saying this is an African national corruption. Because they, they, they are unable to win. So now we. We are saying they need to pay. Like the brother already said, if in parliament you are paying seven thousand. You also, as an individual, you need to pay the seven thousand rand. You will see, we will never fight with them again because they don't have such money. So I would say, whatever that we came in here for. We are here to be united. Do not be left out because you will never stand up for your father. Thank you so much for coming here. To fix for us. I am not saying you should, you should pass the bill though.
Thank you, next.
One, two?
Greetings, everyone.
My name is Bongani, Mathiobula Kalanga Baloi, from Tugazi region, uh, located in Bombela, Odoan. Thanks for the opportunity and the time given to me. As a young leader, I'm very much privileged to be here today to also put my input as one of the South African citizen. Before I go further, let me just give a homework to the staff of the parliament. Let us just zoom straight to the Amendment Section 1 of 73, 1998. There's a description, a description. Well-described candidate, jumping constitution, well-described independent candidate. But I have a problem with the description of constitution whereby it says it means Constitution of Republic of South Africa, 1996. It's not a description for us who are learning, who are not schooling. They must describe fully what is the constitution. Thank you. Also, let me just run and zoom straight to the intersection of Part 3, in Chapter 3, in Act 73 of 1998. Uh, I think it's paragraph, I've never done law, but I think it's paragraph, uh, A.
Here it says. You need to have certain years and you need to have people, a number of people sign their signatures.
For the, uh, independent candidate. So, a humble request, as a leader from the African National Congress, for the parliament to avoid tax who normally call others tax. The one who, who, who have divorced the other party and think that they are greater leaders, they are challenged, they are, they are invited by their communities to present them. Those signatures, it must be clear on this bill. It must be made public also to the African National Congress. And if we check and find those ID numbers and the signature valid, that candidate is dismissed. Because.
You will never stand up for your father like the last speaker said.
Let us also run and zoom straight to paragraph F. Colleagues, Congress, and leaders, we all know, it's obvious, there's an upcoming local government election. If I'm not mistaken, maybe in 2026, 2027. I know myself that I want to divorce African National Congress, my community loves me, I'm a good leader, I won't do corruption. I fully subscribe to the requirements of this bill, I'm residing in that world. And I know that 2027 is coming. I must start now to prepare and lobby my people for 2027. So it doesn't talk meta-metacal when it says at least three months, that member, the, the independent candidate must not be part of any political party. At least three months, at least. It means if I get angry now with this mandemuela, tomorrow I can be an independent counselor like you. Fear yourself, colleagues, that some of them, they said I'm a member of African National Congress and I'm also an independent, oh. What an openness. It must be clear to say, if you want to qualify to be an independent counselor, I'm talking locally now, locally government, at least you must have fully three years on this bill, not three months, not twelve months, three years because I start now for 2027. If I'm not a duck, a person who can get angry today and want to be independent tomorrow, he is a duck. He is an angry child from the fart.
Yeah, I must work, uh, towards closing.
Let me just use a sixty second. And you must also not confuse independent candidate and political parties. I fear a lot of speakers saying, "In Shangano, they were hot in these years and they became hot in these years." An independent is an independent person, this is not practical. I can die now with a car accident living here to home, as an independent candidate representing Ummala who will replace me. Because I don't represent, uh, I don't form part of any political party. I think parliament, uh, because we won't argue with the constitutional courses, it's the last highest court of appeal. So they should have leave everything, if I'm angry, I must open a political party with those fees, everything. And comrades, colleagues, there's no amount of money from the government that is funding political parties. If you are from South Africa, you watch parliament, you fear that all political parties, they've declared they are funders and sponsors. So anyone must not say, "We must create the equal, uh, amount from the one that is getting by the ANC." So the amount must be equally. I fully support independent candidates locally, provincially, and nationally. We cannot allow group trust to get ID from department or former affairs and come back and lead our country. Never and never, still, when we are still alive as young leaders, we won't allow that. We must allow them locally because they are residing in that world.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Yeah, let, let's not, uh, characterize independent as tax. Yeah, let's not go to that extent because. I'm, I'm appealing that let's not characterize society where you don't have evidence. Because throughout with independent candidates that participate in local government. So raise your point in line with what the consul court has directed us to do. Yeah, we're just making that appeal so that we don't have. Next.
Next.
Okay, thank you, Chair. My ma- oh, my name is Meilubambo from Guanyamazani, I greet you all in Wat 21.
Thank you so much for, for the parliament to come here as, uh, to us, to the community.
We really appreciate it. I really.
If I look at the issue of the independent candidate, uh, I ve- I feel sorry for them because they did not take the decision easily. But you can never go out of your house whenever you have problems, you need to fix your problems first.
It is really challenging, gutsy, uh, an independent, I'm a team male, even guma locally, I can hear with some of, locally, it's fine, but not nationally. I won't say it is fine locally because, uh, even locally, where are you going to account?
If, if as an individual, we are having some challenges, where are you going to account? And we, as the community, when we are having problems with you, where are we going to, to report you as an individual? And also, I would say it is a problem to the individuals because we have, here in South Africa, we have a lot of people who are from the neighboring countries. I'm sorry to say they are opportunists, but they are here in South Africa to enrich themselves. There's nothing good they are looking in South Africa, but instead they are here to take our things and go back to their countries. It is so sad to see how our country is doing. Already the country is limping and now we, as the people of the South Africa, we are making it worse. This bill we are talking about now is destroying our country. I am saying this because it says the individual candidate will, might be a president of this country. What I'm saying is, uh, a foreigner might come in our country and become a president of this country. In this regard, uh, money is needed for being a candidate and these people, they have money. Foreigners have money, they can, can even buy us. So where are we going as a country? It is so sad, I, I, I feel this bill needs to be, to be reconsidered. I've heard our brothers and sisters speaking already, they even took my words out of my mouth. But what we are requesting is that you need to implement what we have requested. Money has killed our country. In short, we'll never allow an independent candidate to be a president of the country because we are killing our country.
I submit.
I submit, thank you.
Thank you, next.
Thank you, Chairman, my name is Fanafuti Njolovu. I'm from Guanyamazani, Wat 20. I'm a member of the ANC Youth League.
Greetings to all, in the blood and soul of Solomon Kalushimashang, whose blood has nourished the trees of our freedom. I thank you. Uh, my first submission to you, Chair, is that, uh, I support the, the current electoral system that we are using, which is the PR-based system. And my second submission is that if or when the bill has been amended, it must include a clause that will seek to protect the participation of young people in both political parties and independent candidates who are going to be sitting in our parliaments. Why such a submission, Chair? As young people, we are the majority and the future of this country. As the born free generation of this country, we have our own revolution. And our revolution is economical transformation in our lifetime. So if and when young people are represented in both provincial and national legislature, the attainment of our revolution is at our fingertips. I thank you very much, Chair, young people to the forefront of change. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your submissions, we are going to identify a set of hands. Let me also acknowledge, uh, our Deputy Minister, Ming Kadi Ming. Who joined us to observe our advice from the meeting with the dysfunctional municipalities. Thank you for observing this process. We'll start there, number one. We'll go there, number two. Number three. Number four, Omama. Yeah, Mama number four, yes. Number five. Number six. I'm looking for number seven, eight, and ten, nine and ten. I'm looking for number seven, eight and ten, nine and ten. So we have how many? We have six.
So sile tansha, le distfu pakpela.
Okay. Yeah, number seven.
Ues kombisa.
Number eight. Joanna Lapia, bab. Number eight.
As po shong.
The gentleman is raising his hands, eh, yeah.
Baba, uparamisa santsa ngalabo?
Yeah, I think we are done.
Ngakaba ngasekpe len.
We can start.
Ngakala bab.
Yeah, 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 thank you very much. Eh, my name is Pazamisa Mate, eh, the regional tasking coordinator of the African National Congress Heritage and Region. Might take this opportunity to welcome our Minister, Omamukadime, and also all our stakeholders who are part of us in here. Thank you very much for being part of this process. Critically to all matters of which I mean our comrades have raised here, the first thing of which I wanted to raise to this sitting today is that each and every one of us must be very, very much patient and be cool. Because really if and only if you understand where we are coming from as South Africans, we are raising this, we are going to raise these matters on the basis that some of us, we need to understand or we understand ourselves, where we are coming from, where are we and where are we going to? And where do we want to go to and what is it that we want to achieve by this government, which is being led by the African National Congress? And I wanted to say openly and straightforward that you are proud of the African National Congress as it is leading this government. We're an African National Congress of hundred and ten years and you have got twenty-five years and today you want to say this and this must happen. Meanwhile, you didn't participate in all the processes whereby this organization was fighting for the liberation of this country. Everything and anything which is happening today, it is not because of your wishes, but this is because of those who sacrificed their lives, their times and everything of which they did have for the liberation of this country. And today, you wanted a minority to lead this country. And I wanted to say openly and honestly to all our comrades, you are making a mistake comrades. Irrespective of your democratic rights, you are making a very big mistake because you are angry. And when we want to lead this revolution, we must not be angry. I'm raising this because we are from the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one local government elections and we have won all our municipalities, heritage and five of them because of the voters, the poor and the working class, the motive forces, who are expecting the African National Congress to provide them with their, I mean with services. The ANC has committed itself, informed by the Freedom Charter of nineteen fifty-five, which today is the NDP twenty-eighty and you need to respond to all those promises, commitments of which we have made to our people. And today, you don't even have great wealth, but you want to become an independent and lead us. It is because you are angry. We need, we need not, we don't need people who are angry here. We need people who exactly understand as to what is it that we need to do, where do we want to take this country to. This is the position of the African National Congress. Number one, that we, as the ANC, we support the PR system, that is proportional representation on the following basis. I'll request Comrade Chair to give me the full five minutes. I'm presenting on behalf of the ANC now.
Eh, let me guide.
The ANC supports the PR system.
Hold on. We are not allocating minutes on the basis of individuals, political parties or any other NGOs.
Asigupi umzu, zulungulungslano ngoba, u kamkagleni organization gumbenjan.
Okay, thank you very much. Let me continue.
No, no, I'll tell you to continue.
Okay.
And when you come to the podium, you start with the preamble outside the bill. You must count those minutes as five in the main.
Uma utanga pambi likfuna u, uwa itugogo tu unemizu zulengsana, ukala kbalo, uma ukala kuluma.
So all members who are going to eh, submit are going to be treated fairly with the minutes. And we have now exhausted some of the minutes and...
Ongue ema lunga lete to thula lana, adobe anige imizu zulele nganawa, atawu.
Only allowing you on the minutes that are left for your space, then I will stop you.
Ndogupale mizu zule sali le wena, pe.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you Chairperson. In terms of my, 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 my cellphone, I'm left with three minutes. Let me continue. The first one was saying is the African National Congress, we support the proportional representation system on the following basis. The ANC has always supported a proportional representation system as it is best suited to a country as diverse as ours in terms of race, in terms of class and in terms of language. It ensures that every political viewpoint shared by more than one quarter of one percent of the population is able to find representation in parliament and speaks on behalf of that constituency. We have never supported a first past the post constituency system as it is very difficult to reach the same level of diverse representation.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Siabongha.
Next?
Comrade Chair, I don't, I don't think that I've completed my five minutes. I, I don't think I've completed my five minutes.
Thank you.
Please, I don't think that I've completed my five minutes.
Thank you Puti, thank you.
Siabongha Puti.
Next?
Lolanzelago.
Chairperson, I don't, I don't think that I've completed my five minutes. If you can count all your watches. No, I didn't complete my five minutes. Comrades, let us be honest to this process. I didn't complete my five minutes. I didn't.
Next?
Dolanzelago.
Comrades, I didn't complete my five minutes. I want to read exactly what we, was our viewers there in see. Please. No, no, cool yourself down. No, I didn't complete my five minutes.
Let's, let's understand each other.
Ages visi san.
Let's understand each other.
Tell us visi san.
Can, can eh, can you, don't disrupt eh, the podium. Can the speaker who has made this point, I cautioned that you, you, if you start with eh, preambles, that preamble is part of your minutes.
Mshilo gogo tu uma ukala ngalo gu, lo, lo ukala ngabo, u, u part, we are five minutes wa.
When you come to the amendment bill,
Umaso utagle, gule bili, lomseto.
On the minutes you have been allocated, we don't start there. You have collapsed your minutes.
Ubeso u atati le ema, emm, imzu zuya, kuli sini ke teyon.
This committee, we are not going to categorize which political party must get more minutes and not.
Jongo bangshilo kuti ngai, desaniga, ema oka, eh, tinlangano, ema minutes ilati ten.
And I've ruled on that. I'm not going to shift to that rule.
Besengshilo futubulogo.
Thank you. Next?
Ngabongha, Dolanzelago.
Comrade Chair, please, nklanrez, 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 ba honest to this luguza na process.
No, no.
Even three minutes angamakulu mele process. I am honest.
No, no, no.
If u akona loganelu wash, agal prove, uma gakona.
If Mamela, Mamela.
Because I wanted to, the second point was the problematic of the long pilot system.
No, no chief, no, no chief.
Comrades, no, 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 no.
No, no chief.
No, this time, this time, this time is, is...
No, no chief.
Okay, checka ma minutes akogutati.
No, no, no chief.
Counter ma minutes.
No, no, eh, eh, in that, in that. ANC, I, I understand you are a member of ANC.
Ni avisisa ulm, ulungale, lenkangani ANC.
If, if, Mamela, eh, eh, aso so anando, don't undermine us.
Listen Baba.
Don't undermine us. Don't undermine eh... Don't undermine this committee.
Kela unate le, 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 komi.
Nklanzele, nklanzele matoto telap. No, sit down, sit down. No, sit down, sit down. No, sit down. We are in charge here in control. Don't make a mistake. This committee, you are in charge and in control.
Le komi disipete futi siya, siya laula.
Can I request you to sit down?
Nklala usale pas Baba.
Unless the ANC want to disrupt this meeting. No, 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 no.
Ngapanchi gogo tu i, i ANC ifuna gupaza misa lomisangan.
No, 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 no. Unless, unless, unless you want to disrupt this meeting.
Ngapanchi gogo tu, bama nganputi.
No, 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 no. Sit down.
Kaba basala pas.
Eh, let's address two issues.
Ages lungi sena gulo gubili.
Nklanzele, me right.
Can you please sit down?
Eh, members of the community.
Malunga emparatzi.
We outlined when we started the process.
Si shiro, umas talalo mslangan.
And is the process throughout the country and parliament you are using.
Endo gui indole si sebendisago, eh, parliament inau, yoyongin sao.
So I want to assure you that there is no political party.
Mfuna gwenkinesegisa, kuti gute insanganoye politik.
Or an NGO, a individual in all the meetings throughout the country.
Ngisho i NGO, nama, in, umunvlotimele, gulo, ulongele live.
That are going to exert authority outside ourselves, yeah.
Labane manza, gundula, ngapanchi gue etu lan.
We are here to listen to members and we are respecting you.
Si lanakto la lela, endesi ansoni pa.
And people who have started already, they understood how this protest, protest, protest is, is, is started.
Banu bakali le bayavisi sa gogo tu, ne, lo, lokamba, gwalenle, lokamba njani.
So those who are here, don't take advantage, that would disrespect this process.
Laba, laba la, nasikela gogo tu unata sifuba, ufune guslangani salomslangan.
We don't appreciate how the ANC person who introduced himself, how he conducted himself to us.
Asakta ndlo, lilunga le ANC lilkata guguenda nyalo.
To these members of the committee.
Gulo, gula ma lunga emparatzi.
I repeat, we are going to be firm.
Ni apinza futi stopkinisa.
And not going to be ambiguity on how we are in this process.
Anegue futi nje si chige gogo tu isamba njani ngalulitle.
We don't, whether you want to intimidate this committee or not.
Norma bangatu ufuna gusabisa le, le committee, nama njani.
We have clarity of authority, yeah.
Sine ma lungelo, le, le funasu wende la, nanzi na jengo committee.
Thank you. Next?
Ngabongha, Dolanzelago.
Astulo libito laka kenat sidiso, wa gama kuweedu, ro bushbagh ridge, ki regional coordinator ya Sangko.
I have to, Chairperson, eh, my name is Tepiso Makubedu from...
Sidiso.
Oh, Sidiso Makubedu from Bushbagh Ridge and I'm also a member of Sangko.
Ki, ki ratahlebo gama logo, a portfolio committee.
I would like to thank the portfolio committee members.
For conducting this research. Ki ratahape guchwela bili, ki re re le ba judi, baba bishavela.
I would also like to proceed and say that as the residents of Bishavela.
Re le ba judi ba Mpumalanga.
As the residents of Mpumalanga.
Ratahleba African National Congress.
Who would like to support the ANC.
Gadi proposals, siwasetin badi di rele.
With the proposals that they have already made.
Re re, gorrohono goyaga.
I'm saying that eh, for us to be able to build.
A very vibrant parliament. A parliament that represents the people of South Africa. Those are the issues that we should address. Ke re nyaka gorre, musho arnaibe musho acholopil.
When we want our government to be progressive.
Ki ratahape gulebo gakape the Constitutional Court.
I would also like to thank the Constitutional Court.
Ke ilea hona guchwela cha, yola this bill to be gorre, ki, ki mulao, oi lunkori, rasantoru la la tele, re, le, 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 le mechwaya gusipidi shu, ya wana.
For having eh, made this bill to be the one that we should comply with as well as eh, its eh, procedures.
Ibe isi posho, re, re Constitutional Court iru mulao, o, 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 si mulao, sipidi shu isi, ibe isi mulao.
It wasn't by mistake eh, when the Constitutional Court said that eh, this eh, bill is unconstitutional.
Motewa, motewa, mulao, tewa sipidi shu ya di chetwa, ori?
Eh, the electoral Act, Act says.
Motu, u dumele, motu omolo, mo u dumele, tiro cheta, lo chetwa, via loka, mu yemedi.
Every person is allowed to choose and also to be chosen as a representative.
So ro na re le Sanku, re le mo 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 hatoa ba judi.
Now, ourselves as Sanku, being the residence organization.
Re re mo ho parlamente.
We say to the parliament.
Aye le shoko, di chichinyocha African National Congress, ralebo.
It should take into consideration.
Thank you.
The proposals by the ANC.
Next.
Eh, program director, ndumelala ki rata vela.
Greetings.
Na ginabanya di jengi finia mshala.
Banya di jengi mang.
Banya di jengi finia mshala.
My name is Banya di jengi finia mshala.
Ki chua gulu gwa maspale wa Tabachowu from what eight?
I'm from Tabachowu municipality, in what eight?
Samatoma guchopela gorre, let us be sober.
The first thing that I would like to ask is that, let us be sober.
Ki lugu re ma loko aparlamente, klo ri kisha jamalaho, ro amendiwe.
And I would also like to thank the parliament members for having brought this bill to us, for it to be amended.
Ki woi chimso ramara, apokoro mulao, ki mulao.
It should show that law is law.
Rea amenda, rea sakalela mulao, re leba judi, ki le yemo wa balimu, gwanakuwa maspale.
Uh, we are happy for this law and we would like to amend it, amend it.
Resalwalaga, program director, or mo ki South Africa repelanarinya democracy.
We shouldn't forget that we live in South Africa, which is a land of democracy.
Re di independent di loko na di chavengi, di cheta ki ba judi, mo ga guli vela la orna, batlo ba di relase basushoka.
When independents are available, they are elected by the residents with the confidence that they will do what the residents need.
Ki kwa au karri rea sakasaka, no gopala angoru ro tech mulao, garre u mulao u di relu wa nago swana, wa hone gakoruka u change.
Now, what is it that is preventing us from going ahead with this bill? Because if it is not well, it is also possible for us to can amend it.
Ki kwa rea sakasaka, na rirna batabo akounta kaya, galor ka akounta kaya, ki rak akounta scharwi.
I can hear that we are getting confused. We are asking ourselves that where are we going to account to? Where else we can account to the residents?
Rea sakalela mulao, gorre kamka di independent, ilijona di di ri 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 le ma loka, ro sonali di political parties, ki ba judi wa chetile kishtava savona, ki alibu gama so ramara.
We.
Thank you, next.
We are very happy about this bill, which we say that the independent candidates should be given an opportunity as well, because they are also residents and they are chosen by the masses. I thank you.
Dumealan kamka kalin.
Greetings.
Yinalaka ki Kravimayle.
My name is Kravimayle.
Ki choga scharwi samakdivi, kamaspale wa tabachowu, ka rawa deiti.
Uchaga.
Ka matividi.
I'm from Matividi.
Ga kamaspale wa tabachowu.
Uh, under the Tabachowu municipality.
Wa what eight?
In what eight?
Ki mo ki si motwa wa party owa.
I am not affiliated to any political party.
Ki timo gosu sappota, be leva in cham for independent candidate.
I'm here to support the bill, especially pertaining to independent candidates.
Ka ore nteki boni kamashwaka, kana ki re electa, independent candidate for for maspala wa what eight, for councilor. Ba judi le di miti ni, si chaka re li talitali, le memba cha li na cha party, then agino gubela la kayo, then scharva sa cheta babona, then moa, as scharwi, motwa mo chetile yon first child, basa morad.
Uh, what I have witnessed with my eyes is that.
Okay, ki re kiboni, re cheta di councilor for di eh first child, ager.
When councillors were chosen for the residents.
Yes. Agino gubela la ka di party, ilea talatwa yo, ager, ba yu wa chetile, si chava sa savarad.
The political party came with its candidates, but the residents did not like them.
So ba chusa babona.
They then chose their own.
After ba chusa babona, awi, na ger, then re di apilo, babana asachalela, she journalo motomo.
Now, after they chose their own candidate, that candidate won, but after a while, they could no longer see their candidate, they started seeing someone else.
Then ba decide that, no, aram chetile, aram sappoten ave independent candidate.
Now, they then decided that since we chose this particular individual, let us make him to be a, an independent candidate.
And wa mo sappotele financially, karre, re le campaign, o gara ka chalate, ki de transport, ki dijo, wa mo sappotele roona.
They supported him financially, because whenever there is a campaign, there's a need for financial assistance as well as food.
Eh, ilra sa honu wina kamho, esandura filrona, mara u il akwacha di vote di ina, unfortunately, because uka sa honu ela ka PR, or goru, then o felecha.
The candidate did not win, because, but he managed to get a number of votes, but unfortunately, he couldn't even become a PR councillor.
So o tla gaya tabea wa sappote, we sappote, ro hopala re leba sappote, even if financially you can, eh, lisifti e bayu le tenya ma tomo, la gaya di ra.
We do support independent candidates and we would ask you to also do the same, and if you can support them financially, please do so.
Rea tabi sheta, because kamho, ramone nga kara ya di vote, then reo ta tabi so, rea ta, because re ta zwar, wa ta hono tchala pila bo.
We are very much happy with that issue, and whenever they receive votes, we get excited.
Yeah, ki shira numu, ralebo.
Thank you.
I would leave it at that. I thank you.
Next.
Ngia bo ngah Chairperson.
Thank you Chairperson.
Firstly, ndotala ngugu kala, ngreze yota in the manner you behave.
Firstly, I would like to raise my concern or complaint in the manner in which you handled eh the situation earlier.
The whole point of us coming here Chairperson is to raise our views, go tis in the corner, go see if, and take them into serious consideration, of which if ever obona ngati gubakanai mistake ebakon, there's no need to, now you can portray how powerful you are in the front, they say, I will allow otherwise, you need to have a mechanism in place, goguti wenda njani, whenever, guban.
To say how do you then handle?
How net is a guy, ngoba la si tektoreza ma views we, Chairperson.
Because we are here to raise our view.
But when I will come show you, you will complete the gala.
You did not respect the speaker who was in the podium?
Nonetheless, my name is Dennis Masego, I'm from Baba Tonumchindi Zone, eh what forty-three, I'm branch secretary there. Now, Chairperson, meaning funakreza na ipadne.
I want to raise this part, Chairperson.
I think one or two years back, there was a judgment in court, I think it's a con court or whatsoever, because now maninglama court, now.
Because there are so many courts.
They against the issue good in one word, eh, there can be what A, B, and C. Now, laoma words lao previously began with the.
Those words previously were helping.
Especially as Mchindi, which therefore now you've got what forty-three, who constitutes of plus or minus eight villages in separate areas. Now, Uma today city la, they must be independent.
If today we stay here.
Running for government, which therefore.
Nchale verulame ni, konale Mchindi. I stay in verulame in Mchindi.
There's Shiba site, there's Mlambo Nwan, a lot of areas there, and it's a distant to go figure to another village. Therefore, Uma guban is independent to run for county.
If there isn't independent candidate?
Diwende kanjani, because the other villages won't agree.
How will that happen? Because the words cannot be led by a person they don't know?
The whole point of having government, the person must live with labalu labalida go to hear and see their needs every day. And now we've got one independent, let's say, uko na gu province, because our province cut across, go figure gonkini, bo malaline, then they choose someone from a malaline, uyotatinjani, thinking a daming.
How will the person know my problems as a person in Mchindini?
So in short, Chairperson, I do not agree with le pile. As African National Congress, we don't agree with this bill, goodi amend with the way you go on. The system lebe konna previously.
The system that exists previously.
Si ba nama branch, nama branch.
We have branches and branches. We go with the regions. So that it can have people who they work within those areas, and they are able to attend to the needs of the community.
Leema candidate, leema independent candidate.
This issue of independent candidates will cause problems.
Right.
Because.
Gunabanduli, le 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 abalida go, le yange ngelitla bo la pa.
This person will be in parliament and forget that there are people whom they are representing in parliament.
Because you see, laba laba corner deployed by the ANC there, they still remember, goodi, the Freedom Charter says, the people shall govern.
Those who are there representing the ANC.
Leema independent says somebody shall govern, ngaya kinden. So in short, Chairperson, I do not agree with this, goodi amend with the pill, the current system is still doing fine instead, I money, ekina ekina is well, in a mistakes corner, goguti senda njani, because in the baligil, it's safe to deliver to our people.
The current system should be strengthened.
We're being frustrated by my officials, like the government, abe akashi employed, angasi angasi visi bandu, in return, gusoloma political organizations, guban njani, masengma, masengma independence. I submit.
Thank you, next.
Greetings everyone.
Lika mangu Edwin Stembisomndawe.
My name is Edwin Stembisomndawe. What pushed me to stand in front of you and come here is to oppose the bill.
Si sa tuutsi, saba boni leba foit, tuuma sihamba, gulo gula ma local government, le si gu.
The reason being that we've seen our brothers when we are moving around during local government elections.
Leba si zo ngogo my friend, laspa visa, meaning babita ngogo my friend, la banachala is South Africa.
They were being assisted, or I call those people bo my friends, because they don't, they belong, or they are not residents or originally from our country.
So we are in trase, la guti kamba, we skatisyo basi, guswa nsete, fulonge kola is South Africa.
So it shows that as time goes on, we will be led by people who are not originally from this country.
So guswa ngemtete fulonge is South Africa.
We will be governed by laws that are not in South African laws, basically.
Because bo my friend, basuka ba farai mali, ulama independent, ngoba konale ba kzingabo.
Because those people I call bo my friends actually put money, or they invest a lot to those independent candidates, because there is an interest they are pushing.
Na lo kwa ta weba foit, gutsi ba ba kwa ti le ma organization, le si gu.
And also the disgruntled members of our organizations.
Seba Puma ba ba bo ma independent.
They then cause factions and go and be independent candidates.
South Africa ina kontrola kwa ta we mungu.
South Africa should not be controlled by an angry person.
Mka za guti mine, lo msete wa anhambisan na.
What I'm saying is that I am totally opposed to the bill.
Thank you, next.
Thank you very much, and greetings to you Chair and your entourage. My name is Si Poswell, I'm the Chairperson of the SACP in the Philip, Philip Hardaway District. What we want to indicate as the Communist Party is that we, we don't support the current bill as it is proposed. We feel that it's going to create serious chaos in the country. You see, as much as we support democracy, we support freedom of association and all what it goes with, the bill as it is indicated currently, is going to create chaos in our communities, it's going to create problems in terms of voting and running an election, because if you have got independents, as it is researched by this bill, it means you'll have many people who will be in your ballot paper, and that for the majority who are unemployed, who don't have all these sophisticated issues that those who support this bill have, is going to be a nightmare for them. So we are saying that in terms of voting patterns and voting itself is going to be complicated, but we also understand that this bill in its own, it seeks to undermine the implementation of the national democratic revolution. Why do I say this? In the current political trends, what those who are supporting this bill, they want to make sure that they reduce the majority of the ANC. And there's no other organization in the country that can be able to deal with the current challenges, except the ANC as it invests in the national democratic revolution. So as the party therefore, we are not supporting that, we feel that it creates a lot of chaos, and our proposal is that then for us as a country to deal with the coastal court order, we need to make sure that we support option one that is presented by the ministerial advisor. Thank you.
Thank you, next.
Eh, ngia bo ngah Chairperson.
Thank you Chairperson.
Li kama lamu muzingwenya.
My name is Muzingwenya.
We are African National Congress.
I'm from the African National Congress.
Mi suwa eh what six Mombela.
I am from what six in Mombela.
Before ngukulanga ndale submission yami.
Before I continue with my submission.
Ben galagwenda nasiskelo.
I would like to make this request.
Gutsu gubali leka kuluwa ali.
To say it's very important.
Mshanganu in le fana nale.
In meetings such as this one.
Gutsu songe uma sihlanga neslanas, koni guti baamba.
To say all of us, as we are gathered here, must be able to contain ourselves.
Ngisho gu eh Chairperson.
And also to say to you Chairperson.
Unirresponsability yo gu ranalomplangan very professional.
You have a great responsibility to run this meeting in a professional manner.
Angafusu gusul member of parliament.
I also think you are a member of parliament.
Logu shogu sukufuna logu ni, nsukufunze la guwe.
Which means we have to learn a lot from you.
Manje gungaga yeka pulu.
So it actually puzzled me.
Ben gbona ngasulomplangan ngasu urana ngendale le right.
I was convinced that you are running the meeting in a professional manner.
Goro ngasu ya shlochuga.
But you were so impatient.
Neta ngadu shlochiswaini.
I'm not sure why.
Ngoba ngbona ngivena tu kulumangusi ANC ifna gusrapta lomplangan.
I heard you saying more like the ANC is trying to disrupt the meeting.
There's no disruption here. A good day disruption.
There is not disruption.
Songis sachele pants.
We are still all seated.
And a songis salalela guswana batzi.
We are all still listening to what people are saying.
Kamsa di tulat, juve tulu.
There's no one I've saw trying to throw chairs around.
Guse ufune gusogusi ANC ifna gusrapta mshangan.
For you to can say the ANC wants to disrupt the meeting.
Si nesi nshanganu African National Congress, it popelele la gula processle.
We as the African National Congress are committed to this entire process.
Nkala gakulu Chairperson, gusi, nalana usato yakona, baliga kulu ga, gusi, uma opesa mshanganu, ubokwa na guti baamba.
As such Chairperson, I would request to say, as you proceed with meetings such as this, wherever you are going, you must at least have a bit of patience.
Eh, Chairperson. Eh, ndengelunga African National Congress.
Chairperson, as a member of the African National Congress.
Le pile le konasi support.
The bill that is being proposed or amended, we do not support it.
Ngoba inkinga le konna, inema managerial problems.
Because there is a challenge of managerial issues.
Logu ngaslegusni gete problem, gusen le live.
Which might give us problems in terms of governing the country.
Ngoba ngaje na unkulumangusi, guskulumangene ma independent, lo mudo independent from what?
Eh, as we are talking now, to say a person is independent, what are they independent from?
Ena jo wawa nbesiva krazile, gusi, inkinga lengulu, gunawa inzawa ye accountability.
As it has been mentioned earlier, to say the biggest issue here might be the question of accountability.
Meaning to pinza ntrase, gusogusi espile, gunawa inzawa ye mandate.
My submission also would be to say, another issue will be the question of mandate.
Ngoba uma ngabe gwendega, gusnal in independent, sel se parlamente.
Because if it happens for an independent candidate to be in parliament.
Uma se kufanele, gusi, i parlamenti, ta te tingumo, lele independent, li da wenda njani, gusi, lele tingumo, leli towa li reza i parlamenti, guwe tingumo, leli suwa empagati.
Eh, let's say for example, parliament now must take decisions, so how is the independent candidate going to make sure that the decisions that are taken there are representing the community?
Manje le pile lena, anegi konna gusngayeta.
This bill will not be able to assist us.
Manje, si nesi bo la ngasi, le proportional representation system, ngasi ngiolega.
We are of the view that the proportional representation system is the correct one.
Ngoba na uyibuka, je, i i akonakakomodita inema smaller parties.
Because if you look at it, it is also able to accommodate even smaller parties.
Even ma party lao, achologuti, a exista province, lenya gula ni province, anga existi.
Even parties that are existent in one province, or they don't exist in another province.
Manje le pile lena, anegi konna gusngayeta.
This bill will not help us.
Ngia bo ngah Chairperson.
I thank you Chairperson.
Thank you very much for your contributions. I must affirm.
Si abo ngakaku lu, kutotonge eh di paramisote no.
I must affirm to this meeting, reaffirm.
Gumelingpinze futi kinesegisa glomplangan.
That we are not arrogant and exercising wrong power.
Guti as sing labanla ba tikapa, go noma ba paramisa emanla, la ba sebendisago abi emanla.
The earlier decision I communicated stands.
Si ngumo lenkale, ngasparamisa kwa sektale, ni ngiso lesmili.
The earlier decision we took stands.
Les ngumo le si sete si sakta la, ngiso lesmili.
Is how we run the proceedings of parliament.
Nglenlela sihambi sangakona tinhu boten parlamente.
So that we are fair to ourselves and everyone.
Gwende la gutsu si koni gudmpatsa kachle nona ngamo.
So we are not moving, we stand with that item, with that decision.
Si seme gulesos ngomo.
I'm going to request if this in other hands, we are patient and we'll be patient with everyone.
Nda utela gutsu na ngabeti sakona fuslet ni etanla, siyakona lo gubegetela, siyabegetela la umunfo ngamo.
Until all of us have contributed.
Gute gubeng lapo ngamo, ngamo ni nikoni le guparamisa.
I'm going to start with Uma Mala, the first one.
Nda utala nga magenala, abi wekala.
Is there any this one?
Skona in sandla, le sbonakala gongalapo.
The third one.
Sandla sesstatu.
Is there any other hand before I take that one?
Skona in lesnye sandla nga kabuye la ngagunasia.
Is there any other hand before I take that one? Remember, you spoke first. I want to allow those that didn't talk first.
Ngabeti koni in let ni etanla, sangabuye le glisa, ufuna gutsi ngikale, ngitsa sete ona?
None. Is there understanding that there's no any other person who want to make input before we give that gentleman? another opportunity? Is that an understanding colleagues? There's no any other hands. And after this line, we are going to conclude the meeting. So there's understanding that there's no any other hand. You, yes. The ANC, I'm repeating you because you introduced yourself as ANC. Just join, you raise your hands, just join on the line. Okay, no, they, they satisfied with the issues. So this is our last team that are going to present. But if there's anyone after, if you have another thoughts after this one, you must raise your hand.
Greetings. My name is Cynthia Nkomo. I'm from the Nkoma's municipality from Wat 8. Um, and I was one of the independent candidates. I was glad when I was invited to come to this session today. Firstly, I would like to say to parliament that we wish for this bill to be amended. To be amended so that the community that we are from can also be assisted. We are very frustrated as the community. I feel that this bill will be our road to freedom because when you become an independent candidate, you are nominated by the community. I was affiliated with certain party. My party was very good. The problem is that the constitution has problems that end up affecting the community in the province. That's why the community decided that let's be, stand as independent candidates so that we can see if we are, we cannot bring about change. So I can see that this bill is bringing change. I fully support the amendment of the bill, thank you.
Thank you, next.
I thank you Chairperson. My name is Priscilla Sisabella and I'm from Wat 25 in Mombela. I was seated there listening to members speaking here and I thought to myself, let me stand up and just conclude the whole matter. I am aware that we are here and we are free and it's been long since we haven't been using our rights correctly. Because this bill is written and there could not be a situation where decisions are taken not involving unanimous decisions. So now we are being involved and that makes us happy. I stand here as the member of the ANC and I'm going to speak differently from what my brothers had said earlier on. I would like to propose that they give the independent candidates an opportunity for them to try and fail instead of denying them their opportunity because they are going to make a lot of noise. I know that we are going to disagree, we won't agree on the same stance. But we know where we are all from and we know the truth. Much as there can be disagreements on the matter, but my point is that I submit for independent candidates to be allowed to stand on their own so that they try and fail and they are afforded a fair opportunity.
Okay, thank you. Honorable Lukuta is asking your name, madam? You didn't capture it well.
Wat 25 in Mombela.
Thank you, you can proceed ma'am.
Greetings, my name is Abigail Mokhakani. I'm from Matibidi Wat 8. I work for CB CPWP. According to my according to my understanding, an independent candidate is a person, is the same as other political organizations. And for the independent candidate to be in that position, he is elected by us, the people. We elect the independent candidates because we understand them. Even those that have been maybe given positions by the political organizations, they are people whom we have been staying with. You cannot choose someone whom you do not know. We chose those people because they have been staying in the same community as us for a long time. Now, we are asking that they be given an opportunity to can also go ahead as the other political organizations. Now that is my plea, that we should not sideline those people. They have been staying in those very same communities and they are chosen by people. I thank you.
Yeah, Honorable Lukuta, Simtuk. What is your name?
Abigail Mokhakani.
Abigail Mokhakani, Honorable Lukuta. Abigail Mokhakani. Mokhakani, veteran. Mokhakani, yes. Now, can we have hands? Is there anyone who wants, who's persuaded to talk? Oh. I'm advised that you are the first one. Yeah, you've made your input, let's get the other ones, we have recorded your input. We have recorded, thanks, thanks members, I could not. So this is our last session. This is our last hands, any hand? Okay. I just hold, this is our last four. Greetings. Unless there's something you want to say, you didn't say. I'll give you just two minutes. You can proceed ma'am.
Greetings. I greet the entire leadership present here. For us to amend this bill today. My name is Tolsey Wenyalunga, I am from Wat 3. I was an ANC candidate. I love the ANC very much. And the way they've worked, it's so beautiful. I can't say because I tried my luck there and I could not succeed. So I should actually be exemplary and teach others to say if you failed as an independent candidate, what do you do next? You must pick up from where you've fallen and then continue with your journey, people will still continue and support you. If you are a member of the ANC, you must learn to be patient because when we join, we are indacted. We have programs that show us or teach us that when you join. I should stay within the party because if I stand as an independent candidate and the community know that I belonged to ANC previously, they will not support me, but if they still see me within, they will have hope that things are going to be fine. It is our nature to say when a councillor is elected, as ANC members, we should respect that and work and support the councillor. We should not sabotage any councillor, we should work in harmony with them. My observation is that many of the speakers, whom I will say my brothers in the ANC, are disgruntled and they are not happy hence their submissions or their views on the matter. I am happy to say that I do not support the proposed or the amendment to the bill to say there should be independent candidates. Let's make a firm law or pass a firm law to say when people are doing wrong things, we should be able to put a stop to it. That's my submission, I thank you.
Thank you, next.
Let me take this time and greet everyone. My name is Tabo Makamo, is my surname and I am from Koma Zee. Currently, I am unemployed, employees are unavailable. So I'm here to say that I am supporting individual candidates. Like, it was never guaranteed that ANC was going to rule the country effectively, effectively. They were given a chance. I do believe that the same thing should be done for individual candidates. They should be given the chance. Because a lot of people are saying that they don't want an individual president. But there is one thing that you should know, a person will wake up one morning and say that I want to be the president. A person will be voted to be a president by the nation. So I believe that we should give them a chance. If the community doesn't want them to be, if the community, I'm sorry. If the community doesn't want an individual president, the community won't vote for an individual president, for whoever becomes the president or whoever is put in power is put by the nation. So I do believe that we should give them a chance, let them try. And if they fail, then let them fail because we are all living in a free country, let them do what they want. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
My name is Kifas Mlambo. I reside in Wat 18. I am seated there asking myself, because at local level we had independent candidates, but I'm asking myself as to what value have they added? In terms of improving people's lives. Because what I've observed is that people come in and capitalize on people's suffering. Because they know that as Africans, we live in poverty. We don't have houses, we don't have basic things. So they come and promise all sorts of things. They know that people desire to have water and all those things and they promise to bring water. But there is absolutely no change. Imagine if we were to elect them at provincial and national level, what kind of change are they going to bring? Because if you take now, you will realize that even now in parliament, the same strategy is used to say this party has failed, we are going to do better, this party has failed, we're going to do better. Imagine if we were to put more and more people, independent people in parliament, they are going to live in luxury at our expense. It's more like we are supporting self-made prophets. Anyone can come and say now I want to be president. Anyone can come and say now I want to be president. I think my view is that this amendment, the bill, will open a can of worms here because a lot is going to go wrong. That's my submission.
Thank you. Next?
Greetings. My name is Minky Chachi. I am from Matibidi what eight? I am not affiliated to any party. I am just a member of the community who is here to listen. Now, when I am listening to the discussion here today, I think it is important that we should give independent candidates an opportunity. The reason is that when we are there in the community, those who are in political organizations are giving us a hard time. The reason is that they use others to, maybe for them to want to be councillors, whereas they themselves know that they have caused damage in the parliament. Because if you could take a good look, you would find that the previous councillors have actually done nothing for us as the community members. They only work to benefit themselves. Hence, when we elect independent candidates, we are of the hope that maybe someday things will change. Because as the community, we are pleading that whichever organization is ruling should help us by providing us with services and ensuring that we get houses because we do not have houses. I thank, I hope that what I have brought to yourselves...
Yeah, thank you. Just...
I hope that what I have brought to yourselves will...
Capturing names. I think you will assist us to get a name. Yeah, you are the last one eh...
Ma'am? Minky Chachi.
Minky Chachi.
Who you are like it? That is correct.
Yes, wait, wait, wait. Yes. No, 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 no. No, no, no. He's raising an important matter. He's raising an important matter. We must listen to him so that we are able to guide each other. It's important for proceedings. What is at the first last, he raised his hand, the gentleman. And we, I said he must wait so that I checked because he spoke. He will come later and finish whatever I wanted. He said himself after consultation that he gave me a sign that is proper. Now, the gentleman, he said he has something to raise. Then we give it because we don't want to exclude anyone. And we know that you may have intention to make follow-ups and this and that. I understand correctly the name of, the point of Mr. Tsidiso as he introduced himself. So this going to our last speaker. Few those remarks and then we, we close and... Is that an understanding eh? Okay, thank you very much. Proceed.
My name is...
Vus Dupe.
Vus Dupe from five in Bombela. I would like to get clarity, Chairperson, because I do not wish for us to leave this meeting divided. With the two proposals, the Electoral Court said this bill is not constitutional. There is a need for independent candidates to be included so that they can also have an opportunity. Here, we need to get an understanding to say we are not here to dispute that independent candidates must be included or excluded. But we are here to say the Constitutional or Electoral Court has given a directive on this. What I would like to add on my submission is that the Electoral Court did not say we should change the current system that we are using for voting. But they are suggesting or proposing that there should be insertion for the candidate, the independent candidates to also be part. My concern only will be the question of measures in play that can be put in place actually to prevent cheating when independent candidates are also participating. Because what most people are scared of, it's clear that they are afraid that some from outside might come and have a greater influence within the system. My view is that what we need is a firm system that will ensure that there's no cheating.
Thanks very much, Sabo Ongaputi. Eh, we must introduce the IEC. They are here as observers. In fact, all our meetings, the, since we started with the oral submissions, the Chairperson, Commissioner Mashinini. But here we are joined by Uku, Uprovincial Electoral Officer. Not only go low outreach officer. We thank and appreciate your presence to listen to the views of the community. On behalf of the committee, we want to thank you, political parties, individuals who has made submissions to this meeting. We have listened to all the views you have submitted. The committee, when they were taking notes and our research team there... When we conclude all the public hearings throughout the country, we are going to take all the notes and deliberate as the committee. On the options and the views that you have suggested. The committee members among themselves, they will argue on this or the other. Once the committee has consulted a report, they will submit to the National Assembly. The National Assembly will then debate and consider it and refer it to the National Council of Provinces. The ONCOP will discuss, they may decide to come back to community and consult further. Once the ONCOP has done all its process and considered the report, they will then submit it to the President of the Republic. For the President to assent it into law. Once all the processes have been completed, it then be subjected for implementation in the year 2024. So as we stand here as a committee, we don't have a view on the options we must take. We want to thank staff of parliament. And yourself as the team who assists us with these logistics. The importance, your discipline. To understand the process we are engaged on. We understand that there's going to be difference views. But we are imagining from this meeting with your views that you have recorded. Want to thank members of parliament for respecting yourselves as you stand before us. And want to, uh, acknowledge your, I appreciate your respect on the submission and the conversation with the portfolio committee. Tomorrow, we are going to MLU. And after that, we are going to Mittlibek to do the same process. So we are going to receive inputs in the manner we have done today. Thank you very much and thank members for listening to the views. And the meeting has adjourned.